Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
This is Rich?
Here.
This is Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzek?
Yeah, here.
Levens?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as promised, we're going to start tonight's work session with a PowerPoint presentation on the setback ordinance that we've been discussing for about the last four months, six months, eight months, something like that. So, the planning board engineer and planner, Paul Cates, has prepared a PowerPoint and will go through the PowerPoint and then he's available to answer any questions that council members may have if you're looking for clarification.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. That was quick. All right, so I'm here to discuss the planning board's recommendations for exceptions to the stairs setbacks in the ordinance. What's up now is the current exception, which states that in all zones stairs can encroach up to three feet, three and a half feet from the property line, provided that they land on a five-by-five landing. So, the porch essentially can be no greater than five feet in width and depth. And that change was made in February of 13 and probably as a response to Hurricane Sandy. So, they allowed stairs into the setback at that point. Next slide. So, this is what's currently allowed. The gray line there represents the property line, which is typically about two feet behind the sidewalk, sometimes three. And that would be the five-by-five landing with stairs. And these are actually only, the ones illustrated are only encroaching by five feet. So, they could actually, if the house were higher, encroach even further into the setback under the current ordinance, but they would only be allowed to land on that five-by-five ord- five-by-five landing. So, and this is also what we see more often than not, what builders are currently doing. Instead of taking advantage of that allowable encroachment and limiting their porch size, they're maintaining the front 10-foot setback and pushing stairs back into the porch, which gives them a much less usable porch and, in a lot of cases, doesn't allow for as grand of an entrance. Next. So, our proposal is to allow the stairs to encroach into the setback up to within five feet of the property line. So, this is a house with an elevation at 11, top block at 11 feet with another foot for the floor system and then an exterior elevation of eight feet. So, it represents a four-foot and that, this one, I think the stairs are 11 inches in depth and it allows about five and a half to six stairs to encroach into the setback. So, and then it also allows them to have that front porch. So, next. And then this is another, this is a seven-foot elevation, which would be a six-foot crawl space, which is currently allowed, and then a one foot for the floor system. This is kind of the max we'll see in most situations. And this is currently allowed. That's a five-by-five landing. It's encroaching by five feet into the setback and then obviously the stairs are turned. So, this is a pretty substantial encroachment, but it is currently allowed in the ordinance. And then here is also one of our proposals and it also was stood to illustrate whether or not we would allow landings in the setback. So, in this one, the landing is actually encroaching into the setback by, only by about six inches. And to avoid that encroachment, they could move it up one stair. And that was subject to discussion at the planning board. But this, if that landing were moved up one, it would be allowed per the changes. In this situation, the house is actually pushed back further beyond the 10-foot allowable setback due to the fact that even with that allowable encroachment, the stairs still need room to rise. And without that encroachment, they would have to take some sort of drastic measure to either push the house back quite a bit further or, you know, utilize a significant portion of the house for those stairs. Next one. And then this was also another situation we considered if we allowed landings into the setback, we could see something like this where they have that landing encroaching to within five feet and then the stairs moving to the side. And I know one of Mr. Parzek's concerns was having a lot of bulk pulled forward towards the sidewalk. And that would be kind of, in this situation, you'd have that really wall getting close. And it was ultimately decided that we would not allow landings of any kind in the front yard setback. So, this would not be permitted under the proposed ordinance. Nor, like I said, with that previous example where that landing was actually encroaching by six feet, which, or six inches, which they could change by simply moving it up a stair and they could still utilize that landing if need be. So, that was kind of the situations. We used these drawings as a framework to come to the conclusion that it would be extremely helpful to have that encroachment to within five feet without it being a detriment to the current zoning ordinances. And landings will not be permitted in any shape or size. And then we also limited the width of the stairs to 25% of the building frontage. And in those drawings, that was, that represented about a 40-foot wide building and a 10-foot stair on the ones that we're proposing. So, in that situation. So, that was kind of the framework we used to come to the conclusion and the recommendation that stairs should be allowed into the setback without that five-foot-by-five-foot landing restriction. And that's the main, the main change is removing that restriction. Any questions?
Paul, do you have a copy of the proposed changes?
I didn't bring it with me. I thought that it was the proposed ordinance. I didn't bring it with me. I apologize.
That's okay.
I know Andrew Katniss was actually writing it and he was responsible for it. And I just, I guess wrongly.
I just think it'd be helpful to get an actual copy.
Yeah, I mean, it will, obviously you'll get it ahead of time.
Okay.
But, yeah, and beyond that, removing that five-foot-by-five-foot restriction, everything else is staying the same. So, we're not changing the allowable encroachment into the side yard, which will still require no more than a five-foot-by-five-foot landing.
But in some respects, it's actually more restrictive because no longer will you be allowed to encroach up to three feet, which is currently allowable.
Correct.
So, it's actually becoming somewhat more restrictive in the sense that right now, if you have that five-feet-wide-by-five-foot-deep landing, you can actually come up to three feet right now. That is actually being eliminated as part of this, so.
Yeah, and in that.
That regard is more restrictive.
If Jill wants to go to the three ahead, that one, one back, that one could actually be brought closer. The stairs could be brought closer to the property line.
Currently allowed.
And that's currently allowed.
And would it be allowed under the proposed?
No, absolutely not. So, you, due to the fact that you can't put a landing in the setback, you'd have no way to turn those stairs sideways in the proposed ordinance. So, it would eliminate pulling a lot of that bulk towards the property line. And in, to an even more extreme case, which I believe there was a home just built on First Avenue, that, those stairs could actually split and go in two directions per the current ordinance, which would also add an even greater amount of bulk.
So, a second set of stairs would be coming up from the left?
Yes, which there was a home, I believe, just newly finished.
There's, there's many. There's one back on the bay, as you go back 104th Street on your right, 400 block on your right, has the same scenario where you have two sets of stairs coming up from different directions, simply because of this scenario.
So, ultimately, yeah, this is making the ordinance more restrictive by, you know, kind of eliminating that allowance, but allowing the stairs to land on a porch.
Is this picture, this one, showing the stairs, as you have proposed, encroached stairs, be limited to 25% of the building frontage? Is that 25%?
That actually looks to be a hair less. If I remember off the top of my head, that's 10. And I thought this building was 40, but it may be 50, which would be a 70-foot wide lot. So, that's a hair less. It'd be another, on this drawing, it'd be another two feet, two to four feet, depending on the actual dimension.
The steps would be two to?
Four feet wider, so just a hair wider, not as wide as that center post in that railing up on the porch. Yeah, I did these before. We, we had came up with that 25%, so it was.
Again, just for clarity's sake, currently you could sweep the stairs, assuming they conform to the existing setback, and you lead to a landing? Again, it's one of these absurd scenarios, which no one in their right mind would ever do because I think it costs the homeowner in terms of property value and resale value. But theoretically, right now, you could come up to three and a half feet, make those stairs the entire width of your house and taper them to a five-by-five landing.
Yep.
You could do that right now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, Ray?
I, I had, for the past few months, had a lot of grave concerns about this, but I recently realized that I was looking at it from the wrong angle. I was hung up on the grade elevation of the property and the height of the structure as opposed to looking at it from the position of the structure in reference to the property line. So, if you look at it, if you, it's, it's not only the grade that matters here, it's also the aesthetics of what the front of the property would look like. If people build their house out to the 10-foot setback, now they can't put stairs on the front to come up to a porch unless they come to a five-by-five landing. And we've all seen the five-by-five landings, there's nothing attractive about them. So, what this would do for the matter of five steps, possibly up to 10 feet wide, 10 feet sounds like a great expanse, but in the great outdoors, it's not that big. And it would allow people to, to place their structure on the property line, have their steps without having to sacrifice a lot of space in the backyard in order to move their house back to accommodate a porch. So, I think, I think the town would get a lot of aesthetic value out of it. I don't think we're giving up anything. We're not changing any side yard setbacks. We eliminated the whole landing issue. And some of the properties, like properties on the bay, for example, about 20 feet of the back of my property is in the bay. It's not usable. So, if you force somebody on the bay now to accommodate steps, you make him move his house back even further, he's got no backyard, you know? People like to use their backyards for pools or fire pits or whatever. So, I think, you know, I think, I think this is a good, a step in the right direction.
Anybody else, Bob? Any questions, any clarification, discussion? Okay. Anybody else?
No, I don't have any further questions.
I, Josie?
I don't have any questions. I just think that we get into a dangerous position if we think that we can legislate taste because everybody's taste is different. So, I, I ride around town, I see the houses that are being built. I think people are being very creative. So, I'm not a proponent that we need to do this.
I did, you remember when Mr. Asher was here and he showed the home that they built on 104th Street? So, I did listen to the zoning board, the application and the testimony and, and so on and so forth. And it was interesting to hear the deliberations of the board. And one of the statements made in that hearing is that, and this would be in 2015, that it was an unintended consequence of the 2013 change, is that these porches are now actually difficult for people to put in because they're, they want to be larger than five-by-five. And in part of the deliberations, you hear somebody, you hear a member of the zoning board say, perhaps this is one of those things where we should be writing a letter to Borough Council and asking them to address this. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. Of course, no letter ever came forward, we know that. And you hear throughout the testimony too, and I would encourage anybody in the next two weeks to listen to the testimony from that 2015 case. You hear them talk about how, you hear in the testimony, you hear them talk about how historically throughout Stone Harbor, there was porches. And that's what our town was. People were on porches. And you had these entrances with these wide steps up to the porch. And it is inviting for the neighborhood and it makes for a good neighbor. And that aesthetically, it adds to the neighborhood and how it takes away a lot of the bulk from the front of the residence. Like, for example, when you're, when you're looking at one of the pictures, you can see a good amount of the bulk of the front of the house is gone because it's open. And it's actually keeping bulk off of the property lines. And a lot of, a lot of the testimony and a lot of the discussion you hear has to do with the fact that it actually fits more historically into what Stone Harbor did look like and how that's the way that architects and that's the way how people are thinking when they build their home in Stone Harbor. They want it to look like it's been here. It's a beach home with a sweeping porch that you sit on, that you have your furniture on, that your neighbors are walking by, that they see. So, again, I would encourage everybody to listen to that testimony. It's an hour long, but it is eye-opening. And you hear from some professionals and you actually hear from members of the zoning board as well. And we'll just, because we're going to be bringing this forward in two weeks for the final vote. Questions, clarifications? Nothing else? Thank you, Paul. While Paul's here, you got them. Okay, moving on, A&amp;F.
Okay, I think we'll do the department reports and then we'll go right into the Capitol after that. So, the first one would be the engineer.
Okay, thank you. On the Capitol project front, the contractor for the 2018 Utility and Row Program has completed all the utility work on 110th and 122nd Street. The contractor is currently working on 108th and 118th Streets and moving northerly and on schedule. Next, the 95th Street Bathroom renovation project is finally scheduled to be substantially complete this Thursday, and we have a punchless walkthrough on Friday. We would have liked to have seen that project done a little bit quicker, but we're moving it quickly to closure. The tennis court building is still ongoing and scheduled to be completed at the end of this month. The contractor has submitted a request for a time extension resulting from weather and inaccessible electric from ACE and material back orders. We're going to consider that request. It's a non-monetary request and if it's reasonable, we're going to present you with a change order for a time extension only. And again, that project with that time extension would take them into the first week of March. Lastly, the Borough's new GIS upgrades and online hosting is complete. At this point, the following items are posted and hosted: tax maps, utilities, elevation certificates, and the Tax Assessor's 200-foot list tool. And that is my report.
Mark, can I ask you to repeat this information on the downtown bathroom technical office?
Oh, okay. So, essentially, that project's going to be substantially complete Thursday and we have a punchless walkthrough scheduled for Friday at 1:30.
Okay, next up, Tax Collector.
Madam Mayor, Council, hello? So, January was a very busy month with year-end activity, filing the old, setting up the new, record retentions. Also, the direct debit program continues to be very successful. So, we started that in 2017 with 300 sign-ups and we're over 700 now. So, it's very exciting. I love the direct debit program. I'm glad that that was pushed forward. Currently, we're working on month-end, the water bills. Taxes are due this week, in case you forgot. Due date has been extended to Monday because Sunday is the 10th. And that's all I have. Does anybody have questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks.
Tax Assessor?
Good afternoon. Did everybody get their postcard?
Mm-hmm.
Good deal, but that means it's appeal season. So, I already have had some phone calls. People are still a little confused with the two values they got at the end of 2017 and then in the beginning of 2018 with the revow numbers going on the book. So, that sometimes takes about a half an hour on the phone explaining that to people. But other than that, our 2019 net taxable value is $4,850,587,400 compared to 2018, which was $4,828,103,400. So, the total gain after appeals and added assessments was $22,484,000. Our ratio for 2019 is going to be 101.40, which means that the Borough's numbers or the assessments are 0.4 percent, or 1.4% over the true market value. And that's about all I have. Any questions? Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thanks, Margaret.
Construction and zoning?
Good afternoon. Ray is on vacation. I don't really have anything to report for him, though. We have, there were three new home permits as of last month, two demo permits that were issued. Kind of a slow month in that respect. Fortunately, it's been very quiet as far as any issues in town with complaints from homeowners and contractors, which is good. Really don't have anything else to report as far as the town. It's been very quiet, which, you know, I kind of like that. I don't like to slow down too much as far as the, what we're taking in with the permits right now, but it's, it's about par for, for this month, so.
How are you finding the compliance with the new, the construction ordinances as far as the changes that were made more, you know, recently?
It's been slow. It's been quiet and the guys really aren't complaining about it. No one's complaining about the differences in it as of right now. Well, I think we'll notice that, that change come the spring and into the summer.
And in terms of enforcement with residents complaining, things like that, has that gone down?
It's gone down, yeah. It's gone down a lot. It's good for us in the office. We're not shagging a lot of phone calls and a lot of issues out there, so it's been pretty, pretty smooth.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, CFO?
Hello. The, this year, I think I mentioned before, New Jersey's requiring the use of the FAST portal for the budget, the annual financial information and the annual debt information. They just opened a portal for the annual financial statement at the beginning of the month. The auditors have all that information. They are working on the annual financial statement. And soon as the budget portal opens up, we will know more as far as the timing of when we can introduce and adopt the budget. But it would be no later than the beginning of March and adopting at the end of, or the beginning of April. That's all I have.
Borough Clerk?
How are you doing, Clerk, for January?
We issued in the Borough Clerk's Office 46 boat slips, $72,200. 36 trailer permits, $5,400. One sale craft for $250. 12 certified copies were issued for $120. Three parking permits were issued for $675. One business registration, $100. One beach vehicle permit, $50. And three newspaper vending locations were issued, $1,365. The total for our month was $80,160.
Planning Board? Done. We, the only thing we did at the last meeting was discuss that this was coming before council. Next meeting is Monday, the 11th.
Okay, do you have anything to add, Manchur?
No, only if, there are a few things that we discussed at our A&amp;F meeting that will be coming up tonight, like the fees and the permit language for things like kayaks, hobe cats, and boat slips. We talked about the dogs on the beach ordinance, where the language just had to be a little bit tighter at the suggestion at, of Sandy Posaco. We talked about the new state sick time regulations as they will apply to our part-time help in the summer. And we reviewed the construction ordinances as per the question that you asked tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, we'll get into the Capitol program.
All right, ready? We're starting with finance. Okay, we're going to start the Capitol with finance and I'll turn it over to Jim. I believe there's four items that we have scheduled under Finance and Administration.
Okay, the first item, $5,000, is to cover the cost of computer and network hardware improvements that we, that we may or may not need during the year. The second item is new handsets for a new phone system. The plan is to switch to a voice-over-IP phone system and it will require new handsets for every, everywhere there's a telephone. And we expect to save at least $800 a month by switching to the new system. The $40,000 is to start the process of putting a new security system in Borough Hall and that will replace the locks on the exterior doors with the key fob system somewhere to, well, the same as the police have. And so, we'll integrate with their system as well. And it's going to be a multi-year project. We'll do some of the interior doors and a video system as well. It's just going to be phased out over a few years. And then this is construction, yeah. This mic's.
Just have one Capitol request for a desk for myself. The one that I'm currently sitting on is about 30 years old with multiple repairs to it by myself. And I think it's probably about time that I do something with it. It's, yeah, it's, over the years, I've had to repair it. Haven't really done anything with it, so I think this year's the time to, to upgrade. Haven't really done anything with it, so I think this year's the time to, to upgrade.
All right, I think that's, that's everything under, um, finance. Does anybody have any questions before we go into public works, capital? Okay. Next up will be Grant for public works. I don't know.
Take a recess? Is there a bathroom? It's gonna take a while. Should've brought my hat. I can't see that. Start with public works.
Yes. Um, reverse from yours. Your printout.
What do you mean?
On your spreadsheet, it had it from item 19 backwards. I moved it, so this is item one.
That's why mine's up. One, one to 19. Okay, number one is a road, um, improvement program. See up there, those are the proposed streets unless, um, something major comes about and we have to switch it over to something else. We have a collapse for some reason, major break. These streets, um, talking with, uh, the engineer and going over our GIS, which Mark, uh, mentioned earlier. All of our streets are mapped out that have what the actual size of pipe is, what the material the pipe is made out of. And what we go, what we're doing is we're going by priority in the amount of, um, the size of pipe, the age of the pipe, the age of the street, sidewalks, not sidewalks, uh, curbing the roadway. That's why these streets are, uh, proposed for this coming year. And these are exact numbers as of six months ago, um, as Mark proposed them to us, which is...
I'm going to assume that I'm sure it's been done, but the gas company's not coming back on those streets for any reason.
No. No, actually, some, uh, if you ride down some of these streets, um, they were actually worked on by the gas company. The, the north end of town is, is done.
And we had given them this list ahead of time, so that they, we didn't have that issue.
They'll be working, they will be working south from 111th Street. Paradise, 111th on Second Avenue. That's their proposals for now. And some of these streets were actually worked on. I asked them not to pave those streets, and I had other streets, uh, fully paved, as you may see, um, in the north end of town. So when we come back, um, people are gonna come, be coming back into town and say, "Why wasn't my street done paved?" This is the reason. The way we didn't, uh, waste a good paved job. We had both sides of the street done instead of just one lane. And these are the streets that are in dire need of repairs and upgrades. Um, just to give you a heads up, I have been modifying the 10-year plan that we started a couple of years ago because of the type of constructions that happening on those, on the streets and the size of water, age of mains, um, laterals and whatnot. So I'll be proposing that to public works and to the utilities committees soon. Number two is solid waste packer. Uh, that is to replace the 2014.
He said 2014.
2004.
I'm sorry, 2004. Sorry. I'm ahead of myself. Yes, we try to rotate our trucks out every 10 years. Uh, we're actually working on it. Um, we were, we're supposed to be at five years, five to six years is the recommendation from years past, but we have stretched it out to 10 years. Try to get as much out of them as we possibly can before we scrap them, send them off to somebody else. Um, number three is ADA compliant for the, the beach crossovers. This also includes two pavilions, um, at ADA Street and 101st. They're in dire need of replacement. Um, you might, if you were out walking the beaches or, uh, some of the crossovers, our guys are out there doing the, the, um, the regular crossovers that are all, um, gravel and, uh, posting a rail, but these are all the ADA handicap accessible beaches. Um, this proposal came from, um, our engineers, um, so this is pretty exact of his numbers.
Do we need a CAFRA permit for these?
Yes, on some of them. Um, if you look at, um, 90, 92nd Street and, uh, 95th Street crossovers, they are solid all the way down to the beach run. That's what we're asking to do. We got, uh, hand slapped on the 92nd Street project. They allowed us to do it, but, uh, from now on, we have to get the permits in order to do them. We do have some ADA crossings that stop at the, uh, the crest of the, um...
Mean high water line?
No, the, the actual hard surface stops at the top of the dune, and we can't continue down.
Oh, okay. My understanding is, I forget the exact distance, but you don't need it if it doesn't... I guess because that's dune, it doesn't matter, right?
I think the position we're gonna take initially to, hopefully to your benefit is that it's a functionally similar replacement in the same footprint and try to not trigger a permit. Or it would be a, uh, general permit, not an individual, which would be less cost to the borough, less time.
No, we started to do, um, we got to the top of 83rd Street, and we were told we couldn't continue further until we got permits. So that, 83rd Street will be incorporated in this permit if need be.
Grant, is any of this work proposed in-house?
No.
By our guys?
No, the work that they're doing right now is, like I said, all the soft, um, surfaces. This is all hard surface, um, including the pavilions, which are in dire need. And I have plenty of pictures to show you if you, if you need them, show and tell of the conditions.
You, Mark, to the extent we need CAFRA permits, you wouldn't expect that one?
No, like I said, my, my recommendation would be to have a pre-application meeting with the DEP and use the statute to say, "We don't need a permit." Hopefully, they would agree to that. If not, then we would default to a general, but it's going back in the same footprint. It's not an expansion, height or, or dimension, so it should be...
So it'd almost be like a request for jurisdictional determination?
Right.
How to go ahead and do it?
Yeah, we would probably do a pre-app or a JD, but I, you know, I would, again, interpret it to your advantage until they tell me otherwise.
Yeah, I think that's quickest, sure.
The only difference would be driving piling in those areas that may be sensitive, and they might wanna look over the design first, so.
Either way, I can't imagine it to stay that long.
Right.
Next up, number four is a case loader backhoe to replace the one that we use on the beach to clear our cr- our crossings and, and, uh, it's on the beach most of the, most of its life. Killing me here.
So Grant, just, just for clarification, what, what the, um, John Deere that's to be replaced, what year is it?
Uh...
2010. 2010, right?
2010. By the time we get the new one, it'll be, uh, it'll be 2021, 2021, by the time we get it, the newer one.
And that's, that's because of the salt, though.
Yeah, rots the, uh, the chassis out. Right now, we're...
That's like dog years. It's times seven.
Right now, we, uh, tore the rear end out of it because it's, uh, liquid brakes on it, hydraulic brakes on it, and it's gonna cost us a lot of money. So we put it back together. We're not, we're not gonna attempt to, uh, replace all that material. Number five is a Ford Pick, uh, dump truck. It's, uh, to replace a 2007, which is our salt truck that we use for our parking lots. Uh, the whole chassis is rotted out. The frame is rotted. I, um, replaced the, 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 uh, dump body on it, um, six years ago, tried to save some money back then, but right now, I can't even replace the, um, the oil pan, which is paper-thin right now because I gotta pull the motor, and I don't have the room to pull the motor. And if I've sent it out to somebody, is it really worth it, um, to replace, uh, pull an engine and spend thousands of dollars to do that? And just, or, you know, just scrap the, the truck or sell it on gov deals? I also have plenty of pictures of that one, too. Number six is sidewalk repairs. Um, as anybody walks around the Bird Sanctuary, Third Avenue side of the Bird Sanctuary sidewalk is, has a lot of issues with it falling into the sanctuary. Um, we have a lot of, um, a lot of rodents, uh, boring underneath the sidewalks. We're constantly packing them in. Some of the swales that come up close to the, to the, uh, post and rail fence right now are eroding away, and, uh, is causing the sidewalk to sink, plus it, it's, uh, gotta be over 30, 35 years old. I'm not sure when it was last replaced. Um, I'd like to do the entire Bird Sanctuary, um, Third Avenue, 111th Street, and, uh, Second Avenue side of it in phases. This was a quote I got from, uh, one of the, um, concrete companies in town. Would cost us about $40,000 to replace it and make it ADA compliant as well.
Did you say phase that in? Does that mean the $40,000...
Would be one side. Would be the six blocks on, on this Third Avenue side. Uh, number seven is, uh, request to increase the, uh, the costs or the funding for the marine, um, vessel that we use for maintenance on our docks, our bulkheads. Uh, it's used in kind with water and sewer when we have to replace the, um, asphalt duckbills. The, uh, the boat we have right now is inadequate for, for what we're doing. It's unsafe. I really don't wanna be doing that kind of work, have the Jiffy come in here and say, "Stop." This boat will be made out of stainless steel. It'll have a larger motor on it than what we have now, and it's actually a work boat used for, in marina repairs. So that is a, a request for increase in funds. Number six is, uh, for asphalt repairs, um, for the cradles at 111th Street. We replaced some of the cradles, um, over the past couple of years. We did 114th Street this year, and this is an estimated cost on, if we have any kind of catastrophic, um, failure on those cradles. Over the next couple of years, before we take them out, um, that will cover it. Number nine is, uh, bulkhead replacement. This is the, cover the cost of the extension on 114th Street, the overages. We thought we were only gonna be doing one section of the bulkhead, but it a- actually is increasing by, what is it, 100 feet north?
110.
It's about 100, 110 feet.
110.
There we go. Killing me. All right, now we got a request to look into kayak racks to replace the wooden ones that we have right now. I can put portable racks, more portable racks than we have right now. Right now, we're around 80 spots, 79... Is it 96 spots? 96 spots. And they're wooden racks, and they're already starting to warp. So I was asked to get a number on what it would cost to replace those racks with aluminum, which will last forever. And I can move them, and we can actually put more of them down there in the area, spaces between the crossovers, um, to the floating docks. And then when I have to take my, my, uh, floating docks out, I can actually remove them out of the way, pull the docks, and then there's no conflict. For us to put any more permanent kayak racks, it's, um, they can't be put in permanent because I gotta be able to get my A21 in there and to pull the docks.
And this is for six racks, right?
No. No, it, it hold, each rack holds six boats.
Gotcha. How many are there?
Um, these, uh, I don't recall exactly what the, the estimated cost, but, um... The... Uh, I think it was, right now, we have eight racks. I can go up to 15, I believe it is. 15 racks.
So that's, that's an increase of, we'll go from 96 to 110.
Yeah, yeah.
So another 14 spaces.
Yep. And they also will be lower in height, because right now, they sit, uh, three feet off the ground before the first boat. These'll sit lower to the ground like the ones they have in Avalon, so your s- line of sight over them will be a lot cleaner.
And easier for the...
Easy from, to get them on and off the racks, yes. Number, where, 12? 11.
11.
11 is for basic maintenance equipment to replace anything that, um, we lose. We have a, a very large, um, asphalt roller that's, um, quite a few years old. We've had, um, significant repairs to it. Uh, trash pumps for, um, pumping water, um, power brooms for cleaning sidewalks and, and, uh, the streets off after we do excavation, um, chop saws, uh, heavy equipment. That's what that's for, replace some of that equipment that is aging. Number 12 is, uh, major generator and, um, HVAC repairs. As things progress, and our generators are getting older, our HVAC systems are getting older, this is, um, funds requested for repairs, heavy replacement of, uh, ma- major parts if necessary. 13 is for, um, trash containers. That's the concrete ones that we have out for the, the public as well as the ones on the beach. Um, right now, we're working on replacing or repairing a lot of the, the beach cans. We're still looking into replacing the beach cans, uh, um, out altogether. We haven't found the right one yet. Uh, number 14 is, uh, LED changeouts. Right now, we're working on the fire department downstairs. Um, I haven't done an audit on our, on our costs, but public works buildings have all been changed out to LED lighting. I'm not sure, um, what the savings are, but I'm sure that they're significant with the amount of lighting that we have in our building. So now, we're progressing to the fire department. If and when this is approved, we'll be moving upstairs to the second floor of the fire department and replacing all those lights, and then we'll be moving over to this building to do some, uh, changeouts in here. We did have a changeout, uh, a couple of years back, but it's old technology. The systems that we're putting in now, we don't have to pull the whole, the whole structure out of the, um, out of the, the light systems, uh, so it's a lot co- um, less expensive, cost efficient for us to do it ourselves. Uh, number 15 is replace radios, just like what happened the other day. One of our guys ran over a radio with a backhoe and destroyed it, so I need to replace radios on a consistent basis, and that's what that $5,000 is for. Uh, major vehicle repairs, as the definition will show, this is for replacing flooring, uh, gates, railings. Um, our, our truck number, uh, 1312 is, um, is a flatbed with railings, and the railings need to be replaced. We'll be doing that in-house with this, uh, this funding. Number 17. 17 is for, um, street, beach, bike, bike racks, I mean, bike paths, signage. Uh, was requested to put in some extra funding for those, um, those different areas, especially for the, uh, bike path and the beach. This $25,000 will cover the majority of that. Number 18 is paving for the borough. There's many streets in, in town that are crumbling, um, alligator, lateral cracks, old infrastructure, um, that we need to repair when we have, um, heavy construction going on, like what is happening on Paradise right now. The street was originally only put, um, an inch and a half of asphalt on the street, and it's actually, um, sand and stone and oil. It's not a real asphalt street. So this, this, uh, funding will, um, allow us to go out to contractor... So this, this funding will allow us to go out to contractor and have them come in and do the paving for us, the entire street, plus a couple of areas that we need to modify for our road program from this, this year that we're in right now. And then the, the last one, nineteen, our, our Jeep, a two thousand and eleven Jeep Wrangler is used to do all of our public cans and our beach cans. And I went out the other day to help the guys out and drove this vehicle, and it's unsafe. It's falling apart and I need to replace it. The transmission is going, the chassis is rotting out, the frame rails are rotting out. So that one needs to be replaced. It's a two thousand and eleven. And that is Public Works.
Next up, water and sewer.
Take a break?
Keep it going.
All right. Number one, this is a reflection of the, the Public Works request for infrastructure The number is different on this one because of, this is water and sewer related. The Public Works is the curvings and driveways and asphalt replacement. Number two is for sewer lift station improvements. The Hundred Fourteenth Street lift station is not keeping up with the, the new construction that's going on around town. It was only put in there to lift the sewage from the cottages down at the south end of town and push it towards the station at Hundred, Ninety-third Street. The, um, we need to be able to grind up what comes into the station, and we're not able to do that. So we have a confined space in that station that is a hazard, and our, our guys have to go down three stories to where the pump actually is in a small shaft that's about three by three to clean out the impellers on, on the, the motor. My proposal is to have the engineer look into replacing that station as well as the force main, which takes the sewage under pressure down to Hundred Eleventh Street and drops it into a deep main. This is more for engineering that station out and replacing it. Number three is for well and station improvements. This is for the electronics, the, the motors, the pumps that we have in, in all the lift and wellhouses to keep them up and running. The Eightieth Street Station as well as the Ninety-Sixth Street Station, we've been trying for the last couple of years, we did get a permit to change it out from chlorine gas, which is in there right now, to a tablet system. This is also to help, to have Mark look at what the permit states and engineer out what we can do to improve Eightieth Street contact time with the chlorine before it goes into the system. Right now, the tank that we have in there is not large enough to handle what the state requires us to do. And our former engineers wanted us to put piping outside of the building in the parking lot, with, parking area around that building, which is not acceptable. It has to be contained within the building. So this money will have, have Mark engineer that out for us as well. Stormwater infrastructure improvements. This is to go along with the, the funding that we're gonna need for Ninety-third Street. Last year's capital did not cover all of what we needed for that stormwater project. And with the increases, that's why that, that two million dollars is in there to cover Utility service vehicle is number five. I have a two thousand and nine service vehicle that when everybody is, is tucked, tucked into their homes and we have flooding, this vehicle goes out and, and takes care of any, any problems we have out on the street. It goes through floodwater consistently, salt, salted streets. The body on this, chassis is rotting out on this one as well. By the time we get the, the truck in here, it'll, it'll be two thousand and twenty, late two thousand and twenty, and it needs to be replaced. Number six is for ERTS and meter upgrades. Over the past couple of years, we've been requested to put money aside to improve the, the, the system that we have in place for the utilities collector as well as what is out on the street, and that's what that will help to cover. Number eight is for well controls. This is to replace any of the old worn-out charter quarters, VFDs, that we have in the station if they, they happen to fail on us. Number nine is water tower reservoir. Across the street, we have a reservoir on the, on the lawn next to the, the water, water plant, and we have a tower. Couple of years back, we had the tower painted on the exterior. The, the bowl up, up top needs to be inspected. We have not sent a man or a, a camera in that, that bowl yet for the last ten years, and it needs to be inspected as per DEP to make sure that it's not, there's no contaminants, it's not rusting. Excuse me. And that's what that eight thousand dollars is for, to have our engineer hire a contractor to do that. Fire hydrants. This is for maintenance on the fire hydrants. If, if one is run over by a car or, or it breaks, freezes, which happens, that's to replace those fire hydrants. Any equipment that we need for testing on the fire hydrants. We have to flush our hydrants every year. We have to check to see how many, how many gallons per minute the, the hydrants produce, and that's what that funding is for. Duckbills, number seven. That's for the, the outfall pipes that we have along the bay. When they're damaged, we need to replace them. My, um, my thought on, and moving forward is to remove a, a few at a time of the actual duckbills that are out there now and put actual inserts into the piping, which seems to work a lot better than the duckbills. What it will have is have a diaphragm on the interior of the pipe that will, that will hold back the, the tidal water, and then when tidal water recedes, then the stormwater can be pushed out through those, those inserts. GIS is for the studies for our mapping system and the upgrades for that mapping system. Equipment upgrades, just like I requested in Public Works, same thing with the water and sewer department. This is for any of the materials that need to be upgraded that were used on a regular daily basis out in the field. Number thirteen is for generators repairs, major repairs for our generators, like I said before. The generators that are at the, the, the well sites and the, and the sewer plants are separate from Public Works. They cannot be combined because they're, they're considered two different entities that we work out of the same building, but we're two separate entities. And this is to help make any major repairs that we may have to those stations, and we do have six of them. And number fourteen is for future capital projects that we have, that we were moving forward so that Mark can do permitting and, and preliminary designs and cost estimates. That's what that fifty-five is for. And that's it. Any questions?
That's all?
I'm available every day, seven to three. And I hope everybody has my phone number. Need me, call me. We can discuss. All right?
Anything else on Public Works?
No.
Or Utilities? A and F? No?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on, shared services agreement with Middle Township. Couple items, um, for discussion. So the shared services agreement with Middle Township. Grant, you wanna come back up?
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Most of it.
Yeah, in their packet.
There's a page missing.
As, as we do with most of the towns that are adjacent to us, we share our services. It's a, it's an encouragement by the state to do so, to save costs, so that they don't have to go out to contract or to bid to have work done. And, and what I mean by work, that's whether it's a, a major disaster assistance to those municipalities, whether sharing the equipment by the municipalities. When we had the snowstorm, Blizzard actually, of two thousand and nine, I believe it was, we, we assisted our, our neighboring towns with removing snow because we, we have the equipment, and they couldn't get to those areas and people needed to get out. So that's one of the things. It's manpower, it's materials, it's equipment, it's vehicles, utilities, our police, our fire, EMS, at, right now, share our services with the different municipalities around our, our island, which includes North Wildwood, Middle Township, Avalon. We've actually, and we don't have a shared service agreement with them yet, but we actually borrow equipment from Sea Isle to clear the, the, the point road from the vegetation that comes up on the side of the road and encroaches on that road. We actually borrow their vehicle to clear that area to keep it back off of the shell path. So Middle Township is asking us to redo our shared service agreement. Just to make it transparent, they came to me a couple of months ago and asked if we could possibly help them do some minor construction within their municipal building. The building has been reconfigured a couple of times over. They want us, would like us to, to add a couple of walls, take down two walls, and put in a couple of doorways, so they can rearrange the center of the building to help out their, their police department. Their, uh, computers need to be moved and a couple of other elements that are in small areas, they want to expand the areas. So they came to me and asked if we could help them out, because we have carpenters. They don't have carpenters. And I, when I asked them, I said, "Do we have a shared service agreement?", which this, this paper will ratify it if, if it's so agreed to. And I'm not sure if we have them for Avalon, and I'm not sure if we've updated the one for North Wildwood as well. North Wildwood has helped us after some of our major storms with their excavating equipment. They brought it over so that we could push sand up onto our dunes before we had our, our dozer in the past. So there's times when we will help each other out, and there's other times where there may be a long period of time where we don't help each other out. But it's saving money for the communities.
Where does it say? Five years? Is that the part I don't have?
Duration of the agreement on page two, number four.
I just have a quick question. We discussed this at A and F meeting. The, I love the idea in principle, it's great. I think we asked since they were specifically requesting services from us with regard to the construction that Grant just mentioned, if, and this has been on my, and I think Grant's radar for quite some time, is if they would be willing to provide us with access to their, an access point of, just over the bridge to fresh water in the event we're able to share from, pull from Avalon now, but if we're both wiped out, we have no fresh water. So I, I was just wondering, I didn't see anything in the paperwork about their willingness to do so. Where did that, where did that go, that discussion with them?
This, as I, I read through this quickly today, this basically just goes over the, the exchange of services for the most part, manpower, equipment and whatnot. That would be something that administration and, and we will get into communication with their administration.
Would that be a separate agreement that would, apart from this?
No, it would be...
No, it would work into this. It would work into this. The, what Charles is talking about is...
There's willingness on their end to work diligently towards that end, because I think it's a really important thing that we have. Again, I'm not saying that's a deal breaker or anything in that sense, I just, I'd like the issue to be addressed so that if and when the time ever comes that we need to pull from there, it's set up, it's ready to go, even if it means pulling a fire hose over the bridge and connecting to them, but then we have fresh water.
Right.
So I don't care how, you know, rudimentary it is, I think it's important to pursue.
I had, I had our water and sewer guys do a measurement from the hydrant at Sunset to the first hydrant on the far side of the bridge, and it's over thirteen hundred feet of hose that would have to travel all the way from Stone Harbor Manor, what is it, Acton Drive?
Drive.
Drive is the closest hydrant. And what we had discussed was getting one put right at the base of the bridge so that we could pull, not just for, for fresh water, but for fighting fires. What Sandy did to the communities north of us, we have been in discussions over the past couple of years with DEP and how we can service each other, like this, this agreement, where if something catastrophic happens, we don't have any water, Avalon doesn't have any water, we're totally wiped out, now we have to figure out after the fact how we're gonna do this. One of the easiest things to do, what Charles just mentioned, was to get them to help us with their, they have a private company, which is New Jersey American Water, that services their, their water system, to help us negotiate with them at a low cost to be able to feed us water over the bridge in an emergency.
So this, this agreement basically establishes the ability to work with that.
Correct.
Okay. And we do have in here on number three where each community will log the, the types of services that we give to each other and evaluate it every year to make sure that it's not always one-sided, which I thought was important.
Grant, from having sat on the Public Works Committee a couple of years ago, I remember how stressed your group of men were and how stretched out they were to be able to get done what you wanted them to do. Do you feel that you can adequately handle what goes on here in Stone Harbor and still be able to handle this?
As long as it's done in a, in a timeline between now and March fifteenth. That's, that's what I gave the administration at Middle Township. Past that, that's when we get into our season. And no, I cannot be able to, to just give guys up to do... And no, I cannot be able to just give guys up to do work somewhere else in that time period. Because then we start getting into our, the shiver and other special events and programs that we need to take care of. We are, you know, it's not like I have guys sitting at the shop waiting for something to do. We schedule our time, we manage our time properly. And then what we will do is, we will sit down with them, we'll schedule it out, say, "All right, we'll be here this day for so many hours, and then we'll be here this day for so many hours, and then we'll be here," you know. So that we're not doing any of the electrical, we're not doing any of the the computer system which has to be moved from the police department section that's being worked on. So we'll be going in there in stages. We're not going to be there a full entire week. It'll be a couple hours here, a couple hours there.
I would think an agreement like this, it's a two-way street, too. I mean, you're not, it's not all going to be going in one direction.
Correct.
So there'll be times when you'll be utilizing Middle Township assets. So then it's up to the two Public Works Directors to balance it out and make sure you all get a fair deal.
Yes. And I think this helps everyone out in the long run. Like we talked about, that we need water supplies other than our own in case something happens. All of the mainland is linked together. Even, and they are actually linked with Ocean City, I believe, is linked into that. Or there are plans to link Ocean City into the mainland. We are not.
Okay.
Quick follow-up, and I think I know the answer. Thirteen hundred feet of hose is not feasible, right?
No, you need pumpers in between to push that, yes.
So that's something I think we
Nothing underground? There's no pipes buried from Stone Harbor to Courthouse underwater?
Just the electric.
Yeah, just the electric.
It's something a feasibility study would have, we'd have to do in order to link that. Because you have, you have an expansion, you have a drawbridge, you have to
Yeah, I understand that. It's a little hard to
It's not, it's not a Hundred and Four Street Bridge.
No, I meant underground.
Do you feel comfortable that they're, this is something they're willing to embrace? If we ask them to
Yes.
Out with this? This is not something that
I've talked to them
Not answering the question to us because they don't want to do it or anything like that? Right, so you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good enough.
And five years, is that normal, or?
Yes.
I think the last agreement was five years, wasn't it, Sue?
I think we went year by year for a while.
Well, you know, like I said, this is up to Grant and how he exercises the provisions of this. You may go five years and not use it at all.
Right, but it's there if needed.
When he sees it as a benefit to Stone Harbor, then we'll go ahead and do it. So I don't, I don't really see any drawbacks to this. It's even in here that you've got to tell us what you're doing periodically, so, and keep track of man-hours and whatnot, so. It's pretty transparent, I think.
I think so.
Anybody else have anything on it? Okay, thank you, Grant.
Then we'll bring this forward at the next regular council meeting, on the nineteenth.
I thought that we wanted to do it today, even though we normally don't like doing this, because if he, if Grant's got to wait another two weeks, and he's saying he's in a time, that it's time-sensitive, so we want to offer the resolution at the next, this council meeting, so they can get started. Two special events to discuss, film application and a shiver.
Yeah, we have two events for March. I have to hold this up close because I can't see, sorry. The first is, the film application is from a company called Oris Productions. The filmmaker is a young man from outside of Philadelphia named Nick Oris. He is very familiar with Stone Harbor. He has visited many times since he was a child. What he's looking to do is produce a short film. He needs one to two days between March third and sixth. Only will be six people. Four crew, two actors. I think we did provide everyone with the script and his proposal as well. They're using lightweight production equipment that they own. There won't be any kind of production trucks or large equipment. The majority of the shoot will take place in the home of his mother on Ninety-Ninth Street. Additional scenes that are on borough property, there are four locations that he's looking to shoot at. And one is the Bird Sanctuary. He'll need about four to six hours there, just on the trails. The beach, about thirty to sixty minutes. Any, any portion of the beach is fine with him. Second Avenue and Ninety-Ninth Street, in the street, just some shots of the actress riding a bicycle. And then on Ninety-Sixth Street, the business district, he needs about thirty to ninety minutes there, just kind of walking through town. So anything that's on borough property, I will be there on-site for that. And then the, and he does, he does plan to portray Stone Harbor as a, basically as a character in his film. He will portray it in a very positive light. He will be also entering it into some film festivals, so it could be some very good exposure for the town. The second event is the annual shiver event from the Chamber of Commerce. That's scheduled for Saturday, March sixteenth. It is sponsored by the Chamber, it's a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce and Family Promise of Cape May County. This year, they're expecting about four hundred and fifty participants. Starts at noon on Saturday, the sixteenth. No changes from previous years, they're going to do a parade Ninety-Sixth Street, then a pre-shiver rally at the Women's Civic Club. And then they'll be going into the water at approximately one fifteen. So their requests are a brief closure of the parade route, which will start from the rear of Fred's. It'll make a right on Ninety-Fifth Street and then turn left on Ninety-Sixth Street and just continue to the parking lot of the Women's Civic Club. They are requiring, or asking for assistance from the police department with the parade route for, you know, crowd control and safety. And they would like some new parking signage on Ninety-Sixth Street at the beachfront and a portion of the beachfront lot as well. They are requesting that we set up a stage in the parking lot of the Women's Civic Club for their costume contest. They would like the fire department EMS staff to be available for support. They are having the Cape May County dive team on-site also. They're going to do that. And they'll have their own volunteers monitoring the crowd, but will be relying on the dive team, the Stone Harbor Fire Department, and the police for safety and any kind of disturbances.
Questions? So then, I had had a conversation about the filming with the solicitor, and he had suggested that somebody be with them the entire time, so you're going to actually do that?
I'll be there.
Yourself, okay.
I'll be there myself. Anything that's on the borough property, so it says
Then you'll be there.
Borough locations. He does have some filming that he's doing inside of the Harbor Theater. But that's, he's already made arrangements with the owner there and has approval.
I see the insurance is here for both of the applications. Any questions on either? Anybody? Okay, okay, thank you, Jenny. We had had some discussion about adding a film application type thing, an appendix or something, to the special event application. But we're going to be working on that rather than do that beforehand, we're going to be working on that after the fact. Anything else? There's nothing else on here for discussion? Anybody got anything else they'd like to bring up? We've got a couple of minutes.
Two seconds now, because it's going to be part of our regular meeting. I fully agree with Grant's request to have new kayak racks built or bought at the marina. And we're talking about a hundred and some. I think that it would be appropriate if anyone would like to discuss the fact that we, this is, these are spaces on the borough that we do not charge for. I think it would behoove us to be prudent, since we're going to be spending twenty thousand dollars for new beautiful racks, that we think about charging, I'm going to make it up right now in my head, a hundred dollars for the summer if you want to place your kayak on a kayak rack. It's on borough property, it's no different than the other fees that we have for trailers, for boat slips, for Hobie Cats. And I don't think that the hundred dollars would hurt anyone if they, June, July, August, September, or whatever the length is of the other boats' areas that we rent.
Thoughts, anybody?
I just call them like I see them, I feel like that's just, people already paid to be on our beaches. I feel like this is a nice service, it's going to be offered preferentially to homeowners first, correct, Jill?
Correct.
And then if others would like to utilize it who are not homeowners, I just feel like, how far do you go before?
I think at some point, you know. I can remember this time, maybe it was a little later last year, that we thought it was absolutely a no-brainer that we charge and put out a bid for someone to put umbrellas and a box and chairs on our beach at Ninety-Sixth Street. We were excited about a revenue of fifteen thousand dollars for the use of our beach. So I believe that a user fee would certainly make a lot of sense if we are going to come up with twenty thousand dollars to put up new spaces for people in town, out of town, wherever they come from. In one year, we'd have half of it paid for, in the second year, we'd have the other half paid for.
Do we ever get beyond the homeowners? Did you, do you know?
Last year, we did not.
We usually do not?
No. There's a line out the door waiting to get these.
Because free is free, I mean
I get it, recouping costs, but at the same time, I think Grant said these are lifetime, so you're aiming to pay for them in two years, and then we have them for, you know, for, what's a realistic lifespan, Grant? Thirty years, forty years on these? So, I don't know.
Different strokes for different folks. I think it's, you know, if you're going to do that, then we might as well give away the space for the docks and the trailers, too. I mean, you know, I just think that it's our responsibility, you know.
I see your point, but at the same time, you've got to draw the line somewhere. I just think this, this line is goes beyond where I feel comfortable. I think if we can offer more spaces and, you know.
I'm all for, I'm all for the kayak space, I'm just saying it's on borough property. And it is a wonderful convenience, and I don't think it should be free. End of conversation.
Well, no, it can still continue.
My, 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 end of my opinion.
Continue.
End of my opinion.
No, I think, I think it's a good point. And I know that we did discuss it as we were going through the committee meetings, and there was a bit of discussion about that. I think where we came out was that because it is so popular, for whatever the reason, maybe because it is no charge, that typically the residents are the people who use the kayak spaces, and it's not available for the non-residents. So what we, I think what we had talked about was potentially charging for the non-residents, but I certainly understand your point.
Thank you.
But we're not getting the non-residents?
We don't get there.
We don't get there? Apparently, they're okay. So people have, would they have to come in and show proof of
Correct.
Property ownership first, okay.
We open it up to property owners March first. And then
April first.
April first, if there's any leftover, which there are not. We are requiring them this year, we've posted it online already. We are requiring them to fill it out and come in person. We did have some people trying to email it while people were in line, and it just got a little complicated. So now you must come in to get it.
So happy medium, just throwing it out there. You charge people if there are some available, once the date changes, if you're not a property owner, you're charged? No?
We
Just throwing it out there.
Don't we rent to other than property owners for other things, like for the Hobie Cats and the boat slips? I mean, I think we would be
But we don't give them first, I don't believe that we give them first shot at it. This is the only amenity where we say property owners first. Where when it comes to the boats and the catamarans and so on and so forth, they're not our property owners. Our taxpayers aren't getting first shot at them.
Okay.
So that would be where that I think they, I think it's what you're asking, correct, or no?
I'm asking to charge a fee to rent a spot at the marina in a kayak rack.
Oh, no, I thought you meant, how do we, how do we charge people who do the boat slips and the catamaran slips? And yes, we do charge for them, however, we do not give preference to property owners.
Understand.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
We discussed this at length during A and F, and it was not a slam dunk by any means, because we differed. But the bottom line was that the majority felt that it needs to be a free perk. Everyone didn't see it that way. We asked Jim about what occurs in Avalon, and I believe you said it's free for everyone, is that correct? That might have been what cinched it.
And do they have first, is it the same thing, property owners first, get first and then, okay.
But because we are investing twenty thousand this year, and I thought it was more, I thought from my discussion with you, it was more. You know, I think it is definitely worth considering. Or it's at least worth debate.
Well, we're voting on fees tonight.
That's why I wanted to bring it up before, because there is a resolution.
Right, we can always change that resolution if somebody, or we could add it on the table tonight, and then people could just vote on it. As one of the fees, we might end up voting the resolution down, maybe vote it up. We could add it to the fee schedule. Right now, would you rather wait and put it on for another time, or would you like to add it to the fees that are being voted on tonight?
Well, I think it already is on the fees.
For a hundred dollars?
No, I think it's
It says free.
Okay, okay, so then a no vote tonight would mean you'd like to see that a hundred dollars added there.
But you would be voting against all of the fees.
Right.
And that's kind of
Right, would mean you're not, well, you're voting against the resolution because you'd have to make changes to it, so, right, it would be, you wouldn't be You can pick a portion of it and vote against it, because you don't agree with the entire resolution. So a no vote tonight, because you feel strongly that that should be a hundred dollars on there, would result in a no vote tonight for the resolution. Got it?
I think, okay, I think, I think a hundred dollars, I don't know, maybe it's just me, I think it's a bit steep. But I do know that if I lived on Second Avenue, and I have carried a kayak around before, it's not fun. And if I had a rack to stick it on next to the water where I could launch it, that sure would be nice. So in that regard, I mean, I'm not a big fee guy, I really don't like fees, but we do charge for parking, beach tags, trailers, boats, recreational vehicles, you know. So this is something that's out there that I think is, it is, it's a big service, I think, to the residents. And I personally don't want to charge them, but I, you know, I certainly understand it, I can, I can see it. But I think a hundred dollars in the first year is a bit, is a bit much, you know, to break in at that level.
That might be excessive. We didn't talk numbers, but I was thinking, if we, if we really are going to have longevity with these aluminum racks, we don't have to pay it off in the first two years, or have it pay for itself in the first two years. You know, pay, even if we had a minimal payment of twenty-five dollars, which I can't imagine anyone arguing about, but if we had a minimal fee of twenty-five, in four years, we would see the hundred dollars.
And I think another option could be, when we receive the fees that would be paying off for the improvements, then reconsider going back to no charge, perhaps.
Or we could add more racks if there's room. And that might be even more of a service to offer.
Okay, so, when we do the resolution for fees, if you want to see that resolution remain zero, you'll vote yes on the resolution. If you want to see that get some kind of monetary, you'll vote no, and we're back to the drawing board with that resolution. Does everybody get that?
Do you want us to vote no against the entire?
It means it's got to go back to the drawing board, because we're, you're saying twenty-five, Josie's saying a hundred, so we're not, we're not in a consensus in there, so it means the resolution's got to go back, and we'd come back with that fee plugged in, and we'll bring it back in two weeks.
Well, can't we just amend the resolution? Can't we just ask this thing the way it is? Because we, I think we're all in favor of those fees.
Yes.
And then-
The motion could be-
To propose it with an amendment for-
Yeah, with amended fee, but that's how the-
So then decide on the fee.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, you know, but we're, there could be, we could have a majority who feel they don't want to. So we'll get a true read on the resolution as to how people feel right now. Do they want to add a fee or do they not? And we'll vote on it. And then we'll, and then go into the discussion whether or not you want to, what you want to make it. But first, let's, we will vote on whether or not we want to add that fee. I think it's clear cut, it's on the record, and we just simply vote. That's how I'd like to see it, should we vote on how we vote?
Do we have to go for the hundred dollars? Can we go fifty dollars?
No, right, correct, right, exactly. Right. It would go back to the drawing board to decide how much that would be. If the majority are voting that they want a fee attached to it, and the way we'll, we'll get that read is when you vote on the resolution, because the resolution says no fee. So you vote no to that resolution, it means you want a fee.
Madam Mayor, you could also, when the resolution is introduced, have a discussion relative to the motion, and take a consensus among the members of council, and see where the consensus lies with regard to what you want to do, and then you could amend the resolution and adopt that if you want.
And just a little off the subject, how long, or when are they allowed to place the kayaks there? Does that coincide with the boats going in the water?
See, this is the reason why I would just assume everybody take two weeks to really make a decision, rather than, so if you want, if you think it's fair for a fee to be assessed, vote no to the resolution. A and F can look at what is fair, what's it based on, and we'll bring it back, it's in two weeks. You know, we'll put that resolution in two weeks. I think rather than pressure people to make a decision right now, where we're changing at half-stream, we're changing resolution at half-stream.
Are any of these other, is that going to delay any of these?
Most of them are already out and have been collected.
So we have to vote on them? So we have to vote yes on them? If they're already out?
I mean, the boat slips are out and all the money's back, I mean-
So we can't vote it down?
You can vote it down, you just don't change that part.
You can still amend it. We'll have, we'll have more discussion at the introduction of the resolution, if that's what you want.
Well, I'm just-
No, not you, I'm saying everyone. If that's what everyone wants, we can have more discussion at the introduction of the resolution. I just feel like it puts pressure on people making decisions, and it's better to have more facts. So, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, we'll take five minutes.